I'd like to call the board of the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees, regular meeting today is Wednesday, January 2, 2018. The time is 7:02. Please pay respects to this life.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised Township Board Agenda for January 10th, 2018. It would also be a removal from the consent agenda, a proclamation commemorating Oxford School Choice Week.
Support.
Moved and supported. Does everybody know what just happened with Treasure Ferrari pulling something off?
Something in the package.
Something in the packet that was asked to be put on by the schools. I did check with them, with Treasure Ferrari, that his motion is going to pull it off. So please consider that when you're making your voting.
Just for the record, what we are doing is we are removing Item A as on your agenda will be public hearing request for new class liquor license for 925, the Pure Legacy Entertainment LLC. We're replacing that with a public hearing for the Cedar Lawn and Tan Lake Special Assessment District. And then we're also removing Item 10A, the 925, the Pure Legacy Center LLC liquor license. And then the proposing of a proclamation commemorating Oxford School Choice Week.
Does everybody know what they're going to be voting on? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Remove the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari supervisor, Don?
Yes.
Mr. White, yes?
Trustee Dirk?
Yes.
And then Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
And to public comment on items not on the agenda. Mary Ann?
Yes.
And I'm going to ask if you're speaking on behalf of yourself or the Stony Lake Condo
Association? I'm Mary Ann Keynes. I'm a resident of Stony Lake Condos and I'm also here with Mr. Reggie Shires, one of the neighbors. Both of us would like to speak this evening in regards to the Legacy Center, as you said, even though it's been pulled from the agenda. Happy New Year to everybody. It might be a new year, but we still have the same old concerns and some new concerns regarding the Legacy Center. So we just wanted to bring a few things to your attention and address those concerns with you this evening. So we appreciate your time. Going back to the original intent of the Legacy Center, if it's the 925, the Pure Legacy Center, they've changed their name so many times, I'm just going to refer to it as the Legacy Center. But the original intent of this facility, when brought to the Oxford Township, was that it was going to be a safe haven for youth, that it was going to be a sports activity center for the youth, someplace to go and be safe for the children to go, enjoy themselves, be off the streets, be productive, and maybe do some mentoring and develop some skill sets that would benefit them in life. However, what's transforming in that structure right now seems to be taking it in a different direction. Number one, there's an operating hair salon going on right now. The Planning Commission did not approve a hair salon. It's not governed by the current site plan. So where that came from and how that's already operating without these approvals, I don't know how that happens. Also, there's construction that's been started, but there is a stop work order due to the Oakland County Health Department. On a 300-seat restaurant, they refer to it as a restaurant, they refer to it as a bar, they refer to it as a grill. What is it? A restaurant, bar, or grill? Each of those have different types of ordinances that govern those. And I don't understand how a 300-seat restaurant, bar, grill, whatever it will be, can be serviced by one food truck within that building. The logistics just don't make sense. How can you have a 300-seat capacity with a one-food truck establishment? Also, the 650-seat theater, event center, whatever that might be, sometimes it's an event center, sometimes it's a theater, again, we don't know what that is. The restaurant, the theater, event center, those were not approved by the Planning Commission either, and they're not in the current governing site plan right now. And we, those of us who attended the Planning Commission meetings, were guaranteed by the Planning Commission that if the site plan was to be modified, they would have public hearings on these different businesses that were moving in, they would approve them, and we would be aware of what's going on. So none of these currently are on the current site plan, so I don't know how these are coming to fruition right now. And then referring to what was on the agenda, the liquor license. We've stated before that we just don't feel that liquor should be served in this facility. Again, this goes back to, it's supposed to be a safe haven for youth to do their sports activities. Does liquor really have a place in that structure at all? And already after the original application for the liquor license was rescinded, three days later, Mr. Mills has paintings going on the exterior of the building of a martini glass complete with an olive and a mug of beers out there and the words, you know, "live entertainment" and drinks. And he doesn't even have a liquor license. So to me, that's false advertising and that should be removed immediately. Why that would be allowed to already paint those type of graphics? And I was at the three-plus-hour zoning board of appeals meeting where they painstakingly went through each graphic. And I don't recall any graphics of alcoholic beverages being in that meeting on those graphics or being approved. So how that's being done, again, big question mark. I think what's going on here is that Mr. Mills purchased a very old structure, a very old facility, and he didn't really invest the monies early on for the infrastructure updates, and now he's got to pay the price. And that was apparent with the communications from the Oakland County Health Department in their 14 citations. Going back to old and too small septic tanks for the capability that he wants in there, sewage and waste management issues, the water quality and water flow issues, I mean, all those relate back to the structure itself and how those are going to be resolved. And I guess at this point, I know that on the December 13 proceedings, which I wasn't able to attend because the weather was so poor that evening, but I did watch him on the cable program, and I saw how there were proceedings to expedite the approval and then second application of a liquor license. And I kept just thinking, why would Oxford Township with only two liquor licenses left, why would you want to secure one with a business that's running these practices like they are? And what if a legitimate business comes into play that wants a liquor license? And then you have it tied up in this one building that may or may not happen due to the types of new construction that would have to take place to make this restaurant viable? If Mr. Mills is going to invest that kind of money or not, I don't know. But why would you tie up at this time one of the liquor licenses, one of the two left, for Mr. Mills? And I just kind of feel, going back again, looking at the Michigan State Police Registered Sex Offender List and seeing that there's now 49 registered sex offenders within five miles of the Legacy Center, do you really want to bring liquor into that facility where folks might be dropping off their children thinking they're safe in there, and they might be in the workout gear and going down the hall to the bathroom alone? I just think that we're looking at a scenario where we could have trouble down the road. So again, where do we stop this madness? Who's really governing what's going on in the Legacy Center? How can these things happen? And these constructions start and nobody's governing of them, and don't they have a site plan in place for a purpose? Isn't anybody checking what's going on? So again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate that. And again, happy new year to you all.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Ray Shires. I also reside on Stony Lake Drive. After reading the article in the Oxford Leader, I believe it was, I was a little dismayed at a few things that came out stating that when the permits went to the Michigan liquor licenses, it stated they were asking for two rather than one. I thought, you gentlemen, I don't know if that's your job to check it out, is it supposed to be one? How did it get to two over to the Michigan State liquor licenses? I think some fallacies going on around here. And after all that misrip and situation with Mills and different things that are happening, why would the board continue to want to give him a liquor license? I think he's trying to pull the wool over your guys' eyes. Has there been any issue of permits from the Health Department in reference to the legacy? I don't know. I haven't heard whether they denied it or what's going on or what might be the reason for what I've heard just now, that it hasn't been passed.
I want to explain, sir, I want to explain something to you. This is public comment on items not on the agenda. This is a time for you to comment, not a time for us to go back and forth, add another agenda item.
Okay, I'm just...
I just wanted to explain that to you, sir.
Fine, and I agree with you. I may have overstepped that fact, but I just wanted you to know that next meeting I'll come around and do the same thing, wanting to know why these questions aren't being answered. Thank you.
Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing then? Proclamation of thanks for Lieutenant Scott Patterson of the Oakland County Sheriff's Office. Jack?
Yeah.
Would you like to read this?
Yeah, and I can give you a little what was going on. Just before Thanksgiving, a few of us in the office were talking about what we want to give thanks for and what great accomplishments our township board has done and the township employees have done over the past couple of years. And what really stuck out to me was all the good things that have happened under the leadership of Lieutenant Patterson at our new substation downstairs. I'd like to read the proclamation, hopefully getting a vote for confidence, but the things that have happened above and beyond his scope of work, he got involved and handled all this. So let me read this. Whereas the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees expresses their appreciation for the outstanding service to the community provided by Oakland County Sheriff's Department under the leadership of Lieutenant Scott Patterson. And whereas, under the leadership of Lieutenant Scott Patterson, the Oakland County Sheriff's Department Officers, Command Officers, Dispatchers, and all administrative and support personnel have been successful in providing efficient, effective, and responsive police services for the Charter Township of Oxford. And whereas Lieutenant Scott Patterson leads the men and women of the Oakland County Sheriff's Department to go above and beyond the call of duty in protecting the citizens of our great community, giving of themselves willingly and selflessly. And whereas Lieutenant Scott Patterson's leadership was instrumental in the township's transition from the former substation to the new substation, overseeing budget control to allow increased police services for the community, implemented and received funding for the new bike patrol program, established the school liaison, continued to provide safety for our community at multiple events, not only ensuring the safety, and ensuring hosted events outside the scope of work of the contract are funded by the host within the Charter Township of Oxford. And whereby, whereas Lieutenant Scott Patterson's commitment to protect the citizens of Oxford Township led to the Charter Township of Oxford to have the highest case closure rate in Oakland County. Whereas, due to the outstanding efforts of Lieutenant Scott Patterson, the citizens of the Charter Township of Oxford enjoy a safe, peaceful community environment in which to work and live. And whereas, the Charter Township of Oxford prides itself on maintaining police protection, which is prepared to readily and promptly respond to the needs of the citizens. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees hereby expresses its unwavering support and appreciation for the outstanding leadership of Lieutenant Patterson and the work of the men and women of the Oakland County Sheriff's Office in providing high-quality services for the good citizens of the township.
Thank you. We have in the audience tonight too is Scott, Lieutenant Patterson's commander. It's Captain Dale Miller. Do you want to, I don't want to embarrass you, Dale. Do you want to say anything?
I just like this, on behalf of the Oak...
Does this make this harder to fire?
Well, that's what I thought it was meant for. But on behalf of the Oakland County Sheriff's Office and Sheriff Mike Bouchard, we'd like to thank the board for their recognition of Lieutenant Patterson's hard work and dedication because he's an asset to our office and an asset to your community of being out here to help you with things. He does an outstanding job, but thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you, Captain Miller. Well, Lieutenant Patterson, do you want to say anything? You don't want to go to nobody.
No. Subline. I just want to say I'm very thankful and surprised and humbled and appreciative of the acknowledgement. Just really, I feel just one part of a big team of the Sheriff's Office. I want to thank Captain Miller for showing up and thank all of you, really, you know, it's a reflection of all the hard-working men and women down there in the substation and been great partners to work with down there since I've been lieutenant. Let me give a special thanks to my Sergeant Franklinz and Sergeant Jerry DeRoshu, who've been great over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution. As read? I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to take about a one-minute recess so Mr. Karnakio can take a picture of Lieutenant Patterson, maybe the captain, and I'll even shake his hand.
And get some of these guys back to work.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jimmy.
I know your working days.
They're pretty good.
Are you working well? (laughing) (inaudible) 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 Let's move on to the public hearing for the Clear Lake, Long Lake, Tan Lake Special Assessment District.
I'm going to vote for a public hearing at 7:21 PM to discuss the establishment of the Cedar, Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake Special Assessment District.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call. Curtis?
Yes.
Margie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dunn, yes.
Yes.
Algern?
Yes.
Who put a yes?
Can't we give him something to do while he's gone?
Say yes.
Open the public hearing. Yes.
Or is your chairman?
Okay, is there any, is there any comment on the, this assessment district? Any comment? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
My name is Peggy McCady and I live at 648 Tanview. And I have a couple of concerns that I'd like to have aired. Number one, there are some areas of vacant wetland, both around the lake and on the islands. And I'm not sure if those areas have been evaluated or assessed for either threatened or endangered species. I'd like to just put forward that there should be some consideration to the factors that have contributed to the current condition of the lake. All lakes evolve naturally, but humans often influence that lake's stability. And I am concerned that there may be some lack of knowledge and perhaps even some carelessness that led to the lake degradation. For example, fertilizer runoff, mowing to the shoreline, a lack of buffer zones, releasing pet fish and plants from aquariums, less than optimal breakwater construction, and inner lake transfer of invasive species. Most of those concerns can be addressed through education and implementation of proactive lake management processes. Number three, the lake assessment was done by AquaWeed, who is the contractor to apply the chemicals. To prevent conflict of interest, I suggest that there be a more objective and quantitative assessment with ongoing monitoring for the effectiveness of treatment. And that would probably lead to a more scientifically-based guideline. This could be accomplished either by professionals or perhaps volunteers who have completed the appropriate training. I think that a subjective assessment leads to opinion and is not a sound basis for management decisions. And this may even, but this kind of review may lead to looking at different options besides chemicals. Information from the Department of Environmental Quality states that the chemicals that are to be used have been extensively tested, and most of them will attach to vegetation and are absorbed and metabolized by the plants, and then undergo rapid degradation by sunlight, bacteria, and enzymes. There is an exception, copper sulfate. Copper sulfate precipitates out of solution and becomes a component of the lake bottom sediment. When this is used repeatedly, elevated levels can pose a risk to the bottom-dwelling organisms which are vital to the fishery. And that needs to be further reviewed. It also seems that these lakes have more than one association, and it would be better if one lake association was comprised of all the persons living on the lake. It would provide a more united commitment to the stewardship and a greater accountability. One consideration, another option, might be involvement with Water Resource Commission Lake Improvement Board Program. I hope you will give that thoughtful consideration. Thank you for your time.
Any other public... Yes, sir.
Howdy. My name is Mike Hazelwit, and I live at 346 Fesia Drive. And I don't know if I ever got other notices, but this is the first one that was brought to my attention. It was sent on December 28 regarding this hearing. And I want to second some of the concerns that were expressed by a person, very eloquently, by the person that came before me. One of the things that I am extremely concerned about is, it seems to me like any kind of an assessment should be coupled with some kind of a fertilization, fertilizer application It seems kind of silly to me that we fertilizer lawns runs off into the, into the water and then we use chemicals to get rid of the weeds, the problem that we created, right? So that's a huge issue for me. In this notice, I was not even privy to the idea that chemicals were going to be used. I thought it was going to be a mechanical mechanism to harvest the weeds. So that actually adds to my concern, the fact that we're using chemicals to remediate the problem. You know, we hear every day about chemicals that were thought to be safe years ago, and turns out that they are carcinogens or cause other difficulties in the future. So if there is going to be a weed remediation, considering a mechanical mechanism would be a preference from my perspective. Another issue that I have is, I'm sure that folks who live on the lakes have dealt with the environmental restrictions just for clearing weeds and putting in a, you know, putting in some sand for a beach. I'm wondering if there has been an environmental impact study to understand what the implications and ramifications of this treating the weeds process would be. And if there are any restrictions, kind of to save us from having to go through something later on, if there are any restrictions that would prohibit us from doing that. And then, I guess I have a question just about some of the logistics of this particular agreement. It says that periodic redeterminations of costs may be necessary without a change in the Special Assessment District and without further notice to record owners or parties in interest in the property. So my question is, are there limitations on those reassessments? If not, then I don't know how that we, I don't know how we could agree to an unbounded funding source.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
I'm actually right here, I live at 696 Tanview. I'm just going to say that I 100% agree with what they both have said with everything I have from the beginning. I think that there still should have been different districted areas for the lake in general because all this came, I'm going to say, pretty much over a canal and trying to get that assessed for different canals. I mean, you have two or three different canals on the lake itself, there should have been a few different ports for each one of them. I understand that everybody uses the lake, but with seven years of this going on, therein there's no cap that this is just going to be what it is and we can reassess it anytime, nobody gets noticed, is, I think, absolutely asinine. I mean, you wouldn't, I don't know how anybody could sign something saying, "We're not going to notify you, but this cost can go to this." And you're leaving this up to one company out of control, and the person who did the assessment initially was the person who is the contractor for this. So who's that, who's going to say that they can go at any point in time saying, "I'm increasing this rate fivefold next year?" And you're already locked into this. I mean, and everything else that goes along with it with environmental factors. You can't kill, you know, you said in there, people are hoping that it's going to kill every single weed around them, it's not. They're not going to be killing everything. I think people don't understand that, number one. Also, the chemicals that are going in there, you're going to have Lake Steer Deer in Lake Orient when Cedar and Tan is actually spring-fed, not like the other lakes. I disagree with the whole thing in general.
Any other comment? There'd be a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing to discuss the establishment Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake Special Assessment District at 7:31 PM.
Support.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess I could start by, you know, this, the township is not for this, and we're not against this. We were approached by citizens that live on the lakes, and they have the opportunity to establish SAD district, they came up with the proper amount of signatures, and all we are is processing this application. We have to assume that the DEQ has already blessed these type of chemicals that are going in there. We're not, we're not biologists here on this board, so we have to rely on the state to help us. Do you have anything to say? Do you have more than that?
Well, at this time was the opportunity to express your concern, and if you were opposed to your assessment, you can submit something in writing to myself, or should have, and that can be challenged at the Michigan Test Service. There's been numerous meetings on this, we've been at this for almost a year, and the townships receive the minimum requirements to proceed on as if the majority are in... to proceed on as if the majority are in favor of this assessment, control the weeds in the lake. The Aqua Weed representative has been here to address any of those chemical concerns. So it looks like that the procedures have been extended to those that have those questions. And as far as the assessment, dollars going up or down? It was my understanding that that was a high number. I can't confirm that, but also the reassessment is going to take place on a yearly basis with some selected people that are really instrumental in getting this special assessment district in place.
Joe? Chris, when we verified the signatures, they had the proper amount correct? They were over the amount that's required to have this happen?
We verified the signatures. Engineer Sharp verified the land area to qualify for, for over 50% to proceed with the assessment.
Did you have the exact by chance or not? And it was over 50?
It was in the sixties, it was in the sixties, yes.
Okay, so over 60% of the residents over there want this?
Correct.
Same sort of question?
Certainly can't, come on up here. Anybody can ask any questions at any time.
300 520 Tanview. But we, is that the signature from the first one or the one that was just happened? Because we stopped the first one. So we had them.
We threw out the first one because there was errors, not only by the citizens but by the township. And we figured it was better to start all over again and we did.
Okay, so we had the same options at this time too, yeah? Also the same process to stop it again.
Can I say one more thing? All right. So the new committee, I guess that was formed for this, every single person who was on that new committee was for the weed control before. It was not based upon four people who are opposed to it, four people who are for it. It was picked only by them. Nothing was reassessed as far as this is how it's going to go. We can have, you know, two different committees for the lake, we can divide the lake. So everything was only picked by one person and all those people on that committee were for this. There was no people addressing different concerns.
Again, this board has no control over that. That was set up by the citizens themselves and we really don't.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, that it was set up by them. I addressed those issues before, yeah. But I still think that, I mean, that craziness that you can't have other people making, you know, opinions in this. It should have been addressed from a few different, you know, people on each street. Appoint two or three people from each street, two or three people with different opinions. I mean, it's the same thing with the government. You've got Republicans, you've got Democrats, all coming together to make accountable. And it wasn't ever like that.
Yes, sir. Hi, Rob. I have a couple of questions. First of all, I believe that your, your vote, the weighting of your vote is dependent upon how much lakefront property you have. Is that true? Or is it a per resident that has lakefront property?
I'll put all that's clerks right here. It's actually the land area of the district that's defined. So what you're looking at is if you take the properties within the special assessment district, that is, that is the area that is used to figure out, does it sign the petition, whether or not it exceeds the 50%.
So it's one person within that district or one owner is one vote, so it doesn't matter how much lakefrontage I have. Is that right? So for instance, hypothetically, if I had 50%, 51% of the lakefront property, would my vote be able to, be able to determine whether or not this assessment's come through?
Based on what I'm hearing, I would say yes, right? But it'd have to be determined whether or not the 50% was actually confirmed as a 50%.
You speak up a little bit too?
It's based on land area, based on the statute, it's based on land area.
Jim, I'm going to have you come up here because I make everybody come up. Jim, please say who you are.
Jim Sharp of Sharp Engineering, we're the township's engineer. The statute says that it's based on land area. So theoretically, if one person did own 51% of all of the land and they brought that to this board and this board thought that that was in the best interest of the community, they could pursue the, the special assessment like that. More than likely, you would not if there were 100 people against it, one for. But yes, one person is based on the land area.
In theory.
The land area that you have. In theory, it, it, it could happen, but it's not based on the frontage, it is based on the actual land area.
Thank you, Jim. I didn't mean to push out this quick.
No, I appreciate the clarification. So I'm wondering, do, do you as board members know how many folks actually voted for it or was it, was it based on, was it based on land area? Do we know that that type of a scenario didn't exist through two or three people that had?
We do, we saw this, we saw it. It was over 50% of the land area and 50% of the homeowners on the, you know, around the lake, the 125 parcels or whatever it is. That, both of those exceeded 50%.
Very good. And then I guess my, my biggest concern still is that this thing seems to be unbounded. I have, you're signing me up for a liability that I don't know what.
We're not signing anybody up for anything. We're not.
Someone, someone's signing me up for it because I didn't have.
There were the residents on the lake.
Yeah, but residents on the lake can't commit me to an unbounded, unbounded liability.
They can bond you to SAD.
Are there any protections if, for instance, there's some kind of a, some kind of a liability lawsuit against this application of chemical process? Is that, are, are we, are we held liable for that type of?
You're asking a lowly township supervisor, an attorney question. I don't even want to go.
But you, as township supervisors, these are considerations before you approve it that you need to, you need to consider. I, I, I mean, I understand, I understand I'm only a lowly township supervisor. I'm only, you know, one resident and don't even have lakefront property, right? I'm bound to this by, by virtue of having an association.
Access.
That owns access to that property. So again, you have to make this decision and here are some concerns that I think need to be investigated. Unbounded liability financially, any kind of liability for, for lawsuits or whatever it happens to be, or from the Department of Environmental Quality comes out and says, hey, look, this is an environmental nightmare. If it becomes a, who knows what it could become? So again, I understand that you're not just a rubber stamp here.
We're following the state statute on setting up an SAD is what we're doing.
And does that state statute say that you have the ability to approve or disapprove it?
Again.
I'm asking.
I.
It does.
But you gotta look at how we look at it from our perspective.
I, I get it.
There's 60 some percent that say yes. Where the, to me, I look at it with facilitator. If the majority of them want it, you know, if that's what the neighbors want, what right do we have as a township board to say, 60% of you guys, you're nothing? We're listening to 30%.
You have, you have the, you have the right to look into some of these issues and understand if that 60 some percent maybe was misinformed, uninformed, or didn't realize that they were getting themselves into a potential financial or liability nightmare. And that is, I believe, your responsibility. And some of the concerns that have been brought up during this session have certainly indicated, at least from my perspective, that some more homework needs to be done to understand these. And maybe it, maybe it is that we just need to dot a few more i's and cross a few more t's. If, if this said that your assessment could go up yearly, up to a limit of, you know, 50 bucks, 50 bucks a year or whatever it happened to be, that would be, you know, maybe acceptable to me, at least if there was a limitation. From what this says, there's no limitation at all.
I think it would be more acceptable if it was on a yearly basis or a, by.
And there was some limit, right? I, I can under, I understand, you know, I understand saying, well, we think that, we actually think that was a low estimate. Well, you know, I deal with doing estimates too and a lot of folks will, you know, lowball you and then use change requests or, you know, special assessments to, to charge more. And especially if there's no limitation on it, that's a, that's a huge risk.
State your name and where you live.
My name is Bob Platts. I live on 63 Brookfield and I do live on the lake and I was on the committee for this assessment. And I did also participate in distributing the petitions to the landowners and to the residents around the lake that would be affected on this. As far as the gentleman there having a question as to the cost of this, it is a seven-year period and we can, if we as a majority of the homeowners or the people that signed the petition reject the fact that we're not happy with it, we can cancel this contract with no liability to us. So I, I hope that clears up one of the issues. I do not have all the answers right now. We did try to recruit, recruit, excuse my language, I've got a problem with my throat. But we tried to get people that were concerned about this on the committee that was open to it. And we did not have anybody come forward that wanted to join the committee because of the work involved or something. I'm not sure.
I have emails to prove otherwise. I have emails to prove otherwise.
We're going to.
Do you?
Yeah.
Mr. Platts?
Yes.
Talk to me.
I'm sorry, Joe.
I'm Bill.
I'm Bill. So, you know, we did establish the, that it was over 50% as Mr. Sharp said. And we have had numerous meetings with the township, with public hearings last year and like the one person stated that we, there was problems with that, with the township as well as with the committee. Those were all resolved to everybody's satisfaction. And so this is why we're here today. And that's about all I can contribute at this point. My voice is gone.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, I'm going to, I, I want you to be next.
Okay.
Mr. Nola first.
My name is John Nola, I live at 684 Tanview Drive, Oxford. I, I live on the lake. I got involved with this last year, very much involved with it. And I'm not in here to talk tit for tat. We have two separate issues here. We have an SAD that's governed and managed by the state of Michigan that you folks, my understanding is the township has to be responsible for. And then we have a project under that SAD. And that project, in this particular case, is the weed control of the lakes. So they're two separate issues. The township is responsible, from my understanding, for the SAD management and the way it's supposed to be handled through the state. 51% and I, I'm coming up here a little impromptu, but there's certain guidelines that have to be followed, the way the petition's designed and, and Mr. Wright has verified that that's all been done correctly. It's been run through our, our, all the people involved, the township. So the SAD part of it has been met. Now what we're hearing today is the program itself that the SAD is funding and that is the weed control of Tan Lake. I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm not saying I'm for against it. I was against it, but then I can't stand up here and say we don't have a weed problem on Tan Lake. I think what you're hearing is the people are vague about the management of the weed control on the lake. That is the project, not the SAD. They're, they're a little bit un, un, unknowledgeable, not knowledgeable on what the program is. We did have a couple of meetings to answer questions of people on the lake regarding the project, not the SAD, the project. And some of those things were answered, they, both sides got together and worked very well in trying to work things out. There was supposed to be a governing board established with some people that were for it and for against it. Some things haven't matured. And I think what you're hearing from people today is, we know that we have an SAD, it's going to go against our, the way the SAD is funded and the project is the weed control. And they're a little unclear how the weed control's going to be managed for those seven years for the benefit of the entire lake. And that's, hopefully I summarize a little of this. Thank you.
Thank you. What I'm, what I'm going to do is, this is, this is under the public hearing. I'm going to close out the public hearing. We're going to be bringing it back up here in a couple minutes, so. I know we're already closing, I'm telling them, we're going to keep, we're going to move on. And it's under 10A that we'll be returning to this. Let's move on to the fire department, Township Fire Union Negotiation Representatives.
Board members, this is the last year in our current bargaining union contract. It expires at the end of the year. I would like to get started with forming the committee to go ahead and meet with them and start ironing out a contract going into the new year. I don't want to have to wait till the end of the year and be scrambling again in November, December, like we've done a couple times in the past. So that's why I would like to, at this point, get a board, our committee established so that we can start meeting with them and move forward. My recommendations on the committee would be myself, Assistant Chief Creach, Trustee Curtis, Trustee Payne, and the attorney Craig Schwartz from Bucksel Long to be the negotiating team.
I move to appoint the following individuals as representatives for any negotiations in reference to a new labor agreement between the township of Oxford and the Oxford Firefighters Union and International Association of Firefighters, Local 4763. Fire Chief Peter Schultz, Assistant Fire Chief Dave Creach, Trustee Jack Curtis, Trustee Marjorie Payne, Attorney Craig Schwartz from Bucksel Long, Wofford.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. I would like to add that Trustee Payne did work for the Oxford Fire Department for 15 to 20 years, very familiar with the operation, very familiar with the budget process. She's just pretty familiar with all you guys. So I'm happy to see her on that committee. I think she'll be a true asset.
Along with Jack.
Well, of course, Jack was on it before. Thanks, Joe.
I'll be your partner.
I can do all this myself, you're going to get in front of me. Okay, it's been moved and supported. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Faber to the Cedar, does that it, Jack?
Pete.
Go ahead. You guys ready?
I'm set.
Well, sir?
I move to approve Resolution Number Four to confirm the special assessment role for the Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake Special Assessment District. Approve the special assessment role attached to Exhibit One to Resolution Number Four to implement an aquatic weed control special assessment district program for Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake.
Support. All in, supported. Any other questions? Rohan.
Oh.
Sorry, if anybody wants to speak, now's your time. Thank you, Chris Wright.
Yeah. I'm at 757 Tanview. I'm the president of the Lake Park homeowners association, which is represented around the Tan Lake Canal and portion of Tan Lake. I personally don't live on the lake. I do want to state that if, for what it's worth, they are, the contractor is certified, he's following DEQ regulations, the, it's permitted by the DEQ. They're responsible for removing invasive weeds and tempering as, as little removal of.
Good weeds.
Indigenous weeds, okay? So that the, it's done within. So that the, it's done within a project that is supposed to be there. It's being funded. The hope is, and it looks as though, in all circumstances, they're able to reduce the cost year over year. That's the reason for the reassessment of the cost, not to increase it, but to, if the treatments prove to be valuable, what they're supposed to be doing, over the course of time, you'll see that fewer and fewer treatments are required, et cetera. And then the last thing I need to state is, I've already received insurance on this, and the debt structure, the responsibility for anything that goes wrong falls on the contractor, not the individuals. Okay? They're insured for this type of project. And as long as they follow DEQ, using the chemicals that they're supposed to and certified to use, then within the boundaries of what they're doing, they're responsible and they're insured for it, for liability associated with their, okay?
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes, sir?
So I, I appreciate that clarification, especially on the liability.
They're liable, none-
Okay. So it would be their liability-
And they have insurance.
Great.
They've already approved.
Okay. Um, I still am a little concerned, and, and I understand that it can be reassessed, and we think things are gonna go, you know, we believe, we believe, um, that the costs are gonna go down, right? But I don't see anything that says that. And I'm not so sure that, here's one of the issues that we run into, and I, I kinda talked about it initially. People are still gonna be dumping fertilizer into the lake. It's gonna be running off into the lake. So this is not something, so if, if the fertilizer fertilizes these weeds at the same rate that we're trying to get rid of the weeds, then we may or may not see any improvement, right? So what I would like to see, and I'm not sure exactly how you go about this, is some way of restricting the amount, type of fertilizer runoff that goes into the lake, right? So if this is a one-time deal where we're, we're getting rid of the weeds, then we ought to go to the root cause of the problem and address that as well. And then another issue, um, from my perspective is, if we're going after invasive species, it seems like a chemical application is a, a general weed eradication, um, mechanism and not specific to a particular species. So I'd like to understand how that works.
I have no answer for that.
Oh, one last thing, I'm sorry, but John Nold spoke to the fact that there were actually two independent, um, things being decided. One was the Special Assessment District, and the second was this particular project, which is the eradicate the weeds. But what I heard and what I've seen on the agenda is that those two are one and the same. So I guess my question is, if, if, if they are two independent, um, entities, if you, um, do not, or if you approve the Special Assessment District, can other projects be, um, developed under that approval? Or is this combined as one particular assessment project?
First? You say other projects, are you talking about aquatic weed proj- projects?
So, and again, I'm just referring to what, what John stated a little bit earlier. He said that there were two separate issues at hand. One, which the board was being asked to, um, vote on, was a Special Assessment District. And the second one was a particular project for eradicating the weeds that goes over a seven-year period, all the specifics are in here, right? My question is, if that's the case, if they are two independent things, then can other projects come under the same approval?
Well, what you, what you have is, uh, currently the township has three other projects as far as weed control that's taking place in the intention.
With that same contractor, right?
No. He only does one of the, he doesn't handle for doing, doing the SAD applications.
But those are, those are different Special Assessment Districts?
Yes, they are.
For this particular district, is this the only thing that you're approving? And how are they, how are they separate, according to, to John?
I didn't make the statement, what's the lad who's coming up here? John Nold. Uh, this project is only for what was outlined, only what was outlined in the proposal. So if the proposal says it's for eradicating the weeds on certain lakes within that district, there's a district that's highlighted, that's all they can do. They can't go put certain lakes in, they can't go put, uh, a new road in. This is only for what's been, um, specified as the project for the special assessment. And so the township is approving, approving the special assessment because fifty-one, more than 51% of the people in the district, which is up on the screen, said that they want this project, and the project is for weed control in the district. They can't go out, they can't branch out.
Go ahead.
Oh. Uh, so I know that we were told in previous meetings that, uh, with the leftover money, because Brad Jacobson had told us before, that at a rate of seven to 10 years, um, and if you're doing weed control every single year, you're not gonna have to do it every single year. You might have to do it one year, and you might have to not have to treat it for two years. That you're gonna end up with a pool of money left over. And at that meeting, it was addressed that with that leftover money, they were gonna in turn use that for providing fish natural hatcheries, for doing other things with the lakes. So if this is all bundled in the same thing, where is that leftover money going? Because according to seven years, the seven years is gonna take you into 14 or longer years. So we're paying for something that is 14 years from now. I mean, this is almost like saying, I want my snow done and I need a snow contract, but you're, I'm binding it into a seven-year thing when I haven't even seen how the person has even performed yet. So I understand that this can be canceled at some point in time, but is this going to be something that can be canceled by every party around the lake, joined together? I mean, what if that year only the canal can be treated, not the entire body of lake? So you're saying all this is going to be treated, and we're all going to pay, be paying for everything as one can join. So for the next 20-something years, they are going to be paying one amount, and we're all gonna be helping to pay for only those areas. I think that, uh, I mean, I don't understand how that works. I, I can understand coming to a common agreement with this, because it's been going on for a long time. Try, try it out for a little bit, but seven years is, is a long time, and you haven't even seen anything.
Somebody correct me if I'm mistaken. Uh, you're gonna be taking a look at this yearly, and if the weeds are starting to diminish, they're gonna be able to not spend any more money. They'll, they'll be able to cancel a year or two, or maybe even shorten it to five years. So, and I think you need more than 50% of the people to, to agree for the-
Who is going to be reassessing it? Because I know I addressed to you about, uh, the, the commission that was formed, and I mean, yes, I, I have emails and stuff to prove that I asked to be on that, and I, it was said that I wasn't able to. So, I mean, there's, you have one dictator in this, and it was a person who was for this. And everybody on that was for this at the beginning, so.
The problem is, they came up, we're, we're following the state guidelines for the establishment of SADs, they've met the criteria, and we just have to keep moving. You know, how, how, the internal part of that assessment goes, we have no control over that.
But if we were to, uh, decrease the length of time of the SAD, that's something that we could go forth in, correct?
Again, the policy of, you know, how this is going to work is not this board's-
Mm-hmm.
All, all we have to do, we're the conduit.
Yeah.
They've met the guidelines, state guidelines for setting up the SAD, and I think we just have to go fire. Mr. Nold? Do a little exercise.
John Nold, uh, this is clarification. The, they can't, the, as, the project cannot go outside the guidelines of the seven years and the amount of money that's been, been set aside. There is a governing committee. Uh, I'm not here to talk yea or nay on the governing committee. The governing committee governs the project. They're going to yearly, my understanding, yearly assess, yearly assess the district to see the needs for weed control.
Jan, 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 43 Howard Court.
Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Every year we'll do it, uh, we're gonna do a lake assessment, um, and that's gonna be part of the committee, and, and actually, Ashley, you are welcome to be part of that committee on, uh, assessing the lake at the time. Um, but every year we'll evaluate that, and if they're, they're doing a good job, this contract can be canceled, we can move to a different company, we can cancel what's going on if we don't like the, what's going on with the weed eradication. That's a yearly thing that'll, that'll be assessed.
Ashley, I suggest you take them up and go to all the meetings. You can be their conscience.
Getting up there.
Or both of you can, both of you can, just get together with John, he knows all the players, and be part of it.
If we're trying to do this, I mean, it's, it's to the benefit of the lake, okay? What we're trying to do, we don't wanna, we don't wanna comfort it fails. I mean, we all wanna be able to, to say that they're doing the job that they, they're supposed to, and we heard them to do. So that's really what, you know, the committee's gonna be for assessing what's going on and what they, our company's, uh, doing for us.
So what we're here tonight for, my understanding, is the board has received, the, the, the community has, within that SAD district, went through the state law, and they're requesting to have weed control projects on that district. The board is to approve the SAD, which will fund that weed control. The management of the weed control on the lake is up to this guy here and the committee-
And the committee.
And the committee. And, and public, uh, information, maybe we need to have another meeting up here like we did six months ago.
I will, I will allow you to meet here, and I will open it up for you if you wanna have another meeting.
We're doing a little negotiating right here, right now. So for, for the people who don't understand, I think the concern is, everybody wants the best for the lake. If we, if we do 100% the first year of what was proposed in the district and with the weed contractor, the next year might be 60%, the next year might be spot 20, I don't know.
Right.
But that's the intent, from what I understood, is that correct?
That's what it is. And once, once the, uh, the initial weeds are eradicated, uh, you may go into a maintenance mode, and maybe even half the cost. And I think there was discussion, one of, I believe, that any funds that were not used would be returned to the homeowners.
I would hope so.
But it can't go over, it can't go outside the guidelines that you are approving. You're approving the seven-year contract for so much money to be available for weed control.
What's up, Jack?
Um, you know, I'm, to clarify, an SAD, we're not approving their contract with their maintenance people.
That's right.
All we do at the township is take your money and pay the contractor that does your work, so that the township ensures your homeowners association that the money is collected. We had one on our street being proposed for snow plowing. Curtis Wright, all he ensured was, is that everybody on the street paid for their frontage, paid for, to collect the money for the SAD. We chose the snow plow contractor. It was for snow plowing. It wasn't for fixing the, the gates at the end of the street, it wasn't for anything but snow plowing. And every year, we had a contract, we could change a contract, all we had to do was inform him of who was gonna collect from the township the money for the job done. That your contractor on your other system, which is maintaining the weeds, they're the ones that are liable for the diquat, the copper sulfate, whatever they put in your lake. You guys in the homeowners associations have garnered 51%, you're telling us to collect the money. We're collecting the money by approving the SAD. We're not approving that the lake is being de-weeded. We're not approving what they're using. We're not approving who was on the committee. 51% came to us and said, we want our weeds taken, please collect our money. That's what this SAD is in front of us for tonight. All the pre-work on the chemicals used, the term of the contract, what the money's to be used for, that's done at the committee. 51% has stated they want this SAD. Now, if there is flaws in the SAD role, or what the engineer's determined to be lake frontage and all that, that's what we should go after. That's all our part is. I, I feel what you want, what you don't want. I own the most property on frontage, I had to pay the most of the snow plow. I didn't like it. But if you go to an SAD, all we do is collect the money.
I'm going to say, local.
I'll put comments back.
After your comments.
Just, just for the record, the amount that's signed was 65.79% approval on that. Uh, also, within the contract, it says at any time, the WPOG, which is the homeowners, and they cancel this agreement by paying all services provided to that date, informing not go weed control with the cancellation. So your, your liability's only up to the, to the amount that's been treated. The other item that I want to include is, I did receive a letter through, from Mr. Richard Galberth for the record, from 596 Tandue, which will allow him to then proceed to the Michigan Tax Tribunal if this special assessment is approved.
The elephant in the room is still that there's no upper limit, from what I see. And signing a contract with no upper limit is-
But they have the ability to cancel the contract, and you only pay what they run to that point.
What is, but that's not, what this says is, each year, they could double, triple, make it five times my assessment-
They can cancel it at any time.
Contract, not the SAD.
The contract.
The contract can be canceled, but the SAD can't be canceled.
Could you count on it to prove what it is?
It's also, I have to realize, too, your other neighbors are on the lake. I like, I know Jimmy Denise Kramer. You go to Jim and say, Jim, your assessment's not gonna be $2,000, he ain't gonna pay it. I mean, they're, they're your neighbors, too, just like everybody else, they're not gonna pay it if, also, the contractor comes back and says, we want X dollars, we want more money. Because they're just like you, they pay it as well, they're not gonna say, we're gonna have Mike pay $2,000.
So, so when you, when you write a con- contract, or you, you have some kind of a, a legal document, you don't rely on, you don't rely on just, um, um, you know, uh, stories that you come up with or scenarios. You need to be protected, and I don't see a protection on the upside from this. There's no guarantee. And, and in terms of canceling the contract, is that another 51% of whoever happens to own this land at the time, um, at the time that the, uh, uh, cancellation notice is being voted on? I don't know. I don't have control over that either. So I don't control my own destiny in terms of finances, if there's no upper limit.
We don't control how that works here.
Yeah, you do, because, because you have the capability to approve or disprove this, disapprove of this, and I would think that we should, if you do consider it and, and, and decide to approve it, I would suggest that you approve it only after we put an upper limit on our financial liability, which I don't see. So if you wanna amend it, that would be fine. I understand a whole bunch of people voted for it, but from my perspective, this is a huge financial risk, because I don't control my destiny, and there's no upper limit on my financial liability.
Can I just make a couple of comments? I do know that we, this is the second time that we've gone through this, we've had multiple meetings, that kind of thing, in order to get the facts out. The first go-around, apparently there wasn't enough communication- The first go-around, apparently, there wasn't enough communications with the residents, so we scrapped the whole thing, started over again. I live on the lake, and I tried to convince the people on the lake they need to go with an SAD. Now, if you have a lake and it's developing weeds, which I'm assuming that your lake is, or you wouldn't be here, how are you gonna solve the issue for the weeds? Couple methods, you go with an SAD, this row, or you can raise your dues. You know, it's another thing, have everybody pay for the lake to be repaired. Well, they decided to go with the dues, and you know what happened to the dues in our lake? Every resident on the lake doubled their dues for the year to pay for the lake. And that was for four years. I have balanced this out, this is very inexpensive. When you look at the cost, to go with an SAD, honestly, after reviewing everything that's gone on here for the last several months, many months, it's come down to the point that the residents have decided, the majority, that they wanted an SAD. And that's the reason why we're making the motion that we're making.
I'm going to allow one more question.
It's more than a question, it's, it's a clarification. If, whether it's dues or a special assessment, those can go up unbounded. And I'm not sure what your, what your deal was when you had a, you know, when you had the association paying for it. All I'm saying right now is that it, we need to have an upside protection. So, before approving this, as-is, if it doesn't have that upside protection, that should, that should be included in the agreement. So this is a detail that I think is extremely important, may have been overlooked, right? But, this is something that's extremely important from a risk, financial risk perspective, to those folks that are in that special assessment. I'm sure not each one of them had to hire a lawyer and go through and make sure that this agreement was, was sound. And I'm pointing out that there is a detail that needs to be addressed, whether you approve it or disapprove.
Well, you obviously have a problem on the lake, so what is the resolve? That's what you have to consider. Do you have a solution to it?
If, if, if this is the solution, that's fine. All I'm saying is that there's a detail in this solution that puts me at financial risk that's unbounded. So, whether the solution is good or bad, it's not what I'm, that's not what I'm addressing right now. I'm saying that, don't put me in a situation where I don't know what my financial liability is.
Honestly, I think there's a calculated risk here. I don't think it's...
There doesn't, there doesn't need to be any risk.
Well, every day, every day in your life that you're...
Especially if you guys are, if you guys are telling me that it's gonna go down, the costs are gonna go down, I don't see any reason that you wouldn't put a cap on it. Even if you said 5% or 10%, it would be the maximum that it could go up. There needs to be a cap on what it could go up.
This is all been stated, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. We're quick, and not gonna beat this horse in the morning. Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes, Treasurer Farrar.
Yes.
Clerk Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Deanna Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. I'm going to take a couple-minute recess, unless everybody wants to stick around for the rest of the meeting. I know some of you probably want to leave. So, I'll give you a minute or two to go if you'd like. We're in recess for a couple minutes. I'm a member of Noda, North Oakland Transportation Authority, along with Margie Payne. We have a, an inter-local agreement we've had in place for the last eight years. What I'm putting in front of you is, we have to redo the new agreement. I will let you know that this is the same agreement, just the dates have been changed, that we've had in place for the last eight years. They would like us to take this back, you know, any corrections, you read it over. If you've got any corrections, I know Curtis probably... Spongey. Something else. Give me the corrections, and we will return these to, to Noda and take care of the corrections. Is there any questions?
What if you have comments that maybe the rest of your board members may not share? How we can address that? Like, those might just be like typographicals, or...
Well, most of these probably are.
But, what about like theory, like, for example, for me, item 3B4, non, the, no guaranteed members that are not in the community, that still vote on the board. And I don't like that, eight years ago, we had people that are voting on the Noda Board that aren't residents or taxpayers. They're spending our money.
You mean like...
TTI and all of them, I remember. I was never away from that.
But they also contribute a lot of money.
Yeah, but they're spending our money.
But it's their money.
And I think they should be an advisor, not an actual voter. And things are like, you know, it's just...
Well, they, they give you $200,000, they'd like to have some say in how it's spent.
And as an advisor, I agree. I just want to spend a tax money.
Well, then, you know, here in America, those with the most votes wins.
But is that something to be discussed here? Is that to be given to you?
I will, what I'm going to do is take these comments back to the board. We're gonna come up with an agreement, and you're gonna see it before you have me or anybody sign it.
Okay, so I'll...
And you'll still have, you'll still have time to give your comments.
Curtis, do I send it to you, then?
No. You go, you go to the rest on the...
Get them, get them to me. Any comments? Any other comments, you can come to me, and we'll, we'll present that for the next Noda Board meeting. Okay, we'll move on. 2740 and 2750 Baldwin rezoning. Who wants to tackle this one?
Assistant Supervisor Dunn.
Okay, some years ago, the planner we had in place forgot to include something in the district map. They're no longer with us. The applicants, or the people that own this property, it was not their fault. So what we're asking the Township Board is to allow myself to go rezoning, go through the rezoning process to, to make these properties where they should be.
I got a motion.
Well, I move at the process to consider the rezoning of parcel P04, 07, 101, 018, address 2740 North Baldwin Road. And I consider the rezoning of parcel P04, 07, 101, 019, address 2750, or Baldwin Road. Therefore, to the Oxford Township Planning Commission, to begin the rezoning process with any associated fees in the responsibility of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Moved and seconded, Jack?
Yeah, this came to the Planning Commission last month. And when we looked at it, we had a couple things we had to look at, but we could not determine what it was zoned, just like is in the planner's letter today. It was overlooked, but it's, it has a big impact on the applicant as to which way it should go. And the Planning Commission looked at it and went, you know, how, how could this mistake have been made? Let's research and look, and I see that's all been done. If it goes back to the Planning Commission, I believe it should go back with direction from the Township Board as to what the intent of the zoning was when it was split. The Planning Commission is, is gonna make a recommendation that may not be payable to the applicant or to the Township Board, and we're gonna go in a circle. The applicant is looking to do something. We may create another non-conformity by rezoning this. There's, there's a lot involved in this. And that's why we look for the Township Board guidance to why this happened, and what we can do to A, help the applicant, and B, make it right in the community for the neighbors.
Joe? I think that's exactly why the motion was made, is to send it back to you guys, to do that investigation. Is it spot so? Is it correct? Is it not correct?
That's what we're afraid of. We don't want to get behind this spot.
But that's your role, the planning commissioners. It's something you sit there, you have, you go through these issues and say, "What should the zoning be?" Then you come to us and say, "Based on our decisions and research, it should be X zoning or Y zoning."
But it has to come back to us at the direction of Township Board, because there has been an error made.
But we should get back to the intent back in the 90s when this mistake was made.
Correct.
Somebody didn't fill in the proper color to this piece of property.
And they didn't assign a zoning to it correctly.
And that's what your role's gonna be, to figure it out. The applicant is here.
Hello.
Can I come up?
Certainly. State your name.
Hello, I'm Anne Marie Rup. I live at 2740 North Baldwin Road, Oxford, and own about 2750 and 2740 North Baldwin Road. So when we bought this back in 2001, it was one parcel, and it was all zoned as R1. We came to the Township to have a preschool, and all of our paperwork, it was always R1. It's almost four acres, and an SF2, it has to be a minimum of five acres. So, as far as like our minutes, I mean, we went back all the way, you know, from, at 2000, actually, and every piece of paper that we had was R1. So, that's what, mainly what we are here for, is to clarify that both parcels are R1. Thank you.
It's the board's pleasure. Did you, somebody repeat the motion over here?
Basically, the rezoning, the two parcels, back to the Planning Commission. Have them do the lake work, because they are a planning board. Come back us with a recommendation. Is it SF2? Is it R1? Why, why not? And this will be recommended to you to adopt. Just like the second one we're doing. That's what they did there.
Sure.
What he's telling us, this board is gonna give the Planning Commission the authority to give a recommendation for rezoning based on the lake properties around it. We just can't, as a planning commission, walk in and say, "We're gonna rezon this up there, and we're gonna recommend it to you guys," because we don't know what it was zoned properly.
But we're also going to be authorizing us to pay for this rezoning.
Yes.
Which is, could be up to $6,000.
Probably.
That's what, that's what we ask for somebody to rezon.
Yes.
To put up an escrow, and if we don't spend all the money, we give it back.
Yes.
So, we're also...
It was our mistake.
It was our mistake. Well, it was actually the planner before, Carlisle Wortman. But I don't think we had a snowball chance or whatever to improve the money, so we have to probably eat it.
We gotta make it right?
We have to make it right.
But, as the planning commission cannot spend any money, we need you to tell us that. That's all this motion is doing.
So it's a fee, that's responsible, the donation.
Yes. That's why it has to come from here.
Roll call.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Farrar.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
This is the next side, it kind of follows exactly what we just talked about, but to the completion of it.
Oh, yeah.
I move to approve the rezoning of parcel P04, 35, 200, 005. Single-family, R1 zoning, to our recreation, zoning based on the Oxford Township Planning Commission's findings that the proposed rezoning meets the requirements of Section 18.3 and Section 18.5 of Oxford Township's zoning order 67A. The rezoning is consistent and compatible with the master plan, adjacent zoning districts, and adjacent land uses.
Second.
Oh, on Jack, is also to be combined, parcel number P04, 35, 200, 001.
Now, a second.
Moved and seconded, and this goes back on the tax, tax rule. Any other questions on this piece that's over there, the golf course? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Farrar.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Jack, just like this happened, is how expect one of the board to go, hey?
Well, we need that, we need to be told that.
Purchase of new postage meter. Joe, this is you.
Board members, basically, the postage meter that we already purchased isn't meeting our needs. So what can I do, an upgrade? You're gonna take back the old one as an exchange. We get like a upper-level postage meter that we think will meet our needs a little bit better. So, that was kind of a suggestion. I move to approve the lease of a Pitney Bowson Pro 1000 machine for $234.24 per month for 60 months, after which the Charter Township of Oxford will own the machine. Authorized Township Supervisor William Dunn, sign the lease on behalf of the Township of Oxford.
It's forward. That's been supported by Margie Payne.
Yes, Curtis.
The, the expense is going to the postage account?
Yes.
Uh, roll call.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Farrar.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Uh, to the committee appointment and fee schedule. In the past, the gravel inspection was thought to be under the Planning Commission, and we found out that it should be a Township Committee. Therefore, and therefore, I'm going to make a recommendation for three people. Under the land division lot split combination, that used to be done by a committee, that committee, we're, we're trying to save money on it. At this committee, if somebody come in and wanted to do a lot split, this committee would determine whether it meets the ordinance. We have a planner that could do this. So, eventually, we're gonna have him be the one that okay's the lot split. We send it to the county, and they, they approve it. But until this happens, and we change our ordinances to reflect this, I'm going to make another recommendation for the supervisor, treasurer, clerk, to be that committee that would look at the lot splits and to forward it on to the county, where they would give it a property ID numbers. So, I'm gonna make a motion...
I'll start the first one.
Why don't you, why don't you go, Andrew?
I move that the Oxford Township Supervisor, Oxford Township Planning Commission Chairperson, and Oxford Township Board Liaison to the Planning Commission, be appointed to the gravel inspection committee, with the term expired December 31, 2018.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Move, Joe.
I move that the Supervisor, Clerk, and Treasurer for the Charter Township of Oxford, and a representative of Carlisle Wortman Associates, be appointed as the representatives of the acreage land division lot split combination committee, replacing the Oxford Township Planning Commission representatives effective immediately.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Bill, I, I really admonished this board for going through with this lot split committee to go through, saving an applicant almost $580.
Yes.
I mean, that, that's one of the fees that I've always complained about, so...
And all they do is say, "Does it, does it meet the ordinance?" And if it does, we just send it down to the county.
And it's proven that we can make a mistake, and the county looks at it and does all the work.
Yes. Did we approve all that?
Not yet.
Motion seconded on the floor, for a vote. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve the updated acreage land division lot split combination review fee schedule as presented, effective January 1, 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'm gonna do a roll call on this one. Okay, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Farrar.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer, you're ready, boy. Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
And Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Did I vote?
You can't get it, like...
Yes.
It's American.
Let's move to the final one. I'll turn this over to Curtis Wright.
Yes, board members, in close, is the results of the November 7 general election that's been certified by Board of Canvassers. The vote totals are in the packet. So I'll move to approve the canvas of votes for the November 7, 2017, general election for the Charter Township of Oxford as presented, and include it as an attachment to the minutes.
Forward.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? Congratulations on a well-run voting.
Election.
Election, rather. Thank you over there in Pea Gower. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I guess we're on to the end here. Public comments, is there any public comment?
Oh, come on.
Mr. Noll, make it short, sir.
John Noll, I want to thank the board for their patience, and the audience for their patience in regards to the SAD on the weed control. I have great hopes that the, the committee in charge of the lakes will encompass everybody and all the feelings, but thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Any other comment?
So, just to clarify, do I need to do anything else? Is a zoning now R1 or...
No, it's going back to the Planning Commission, nothing's happened.
Oh.
We haven't, that's where we zoned.
There's a process that happens.
Okay, so what, what is the next step that I...
Planning Commission.
You sit back and wait.
I have one question. If you have the R2 zoning, doesn't it have to be five acres? R1 zoning doesn't have to be five acres? The Planning Commission's gonna discuss all that. Yeah, they'll do all that legwork.
What'll happen next, because Deanna will get it on the Planning Commission's schedule based on...
Hold on. We're on public comment, we're not gonna be having, oh, we're not gonna be doing back and forth. Call...
Okay, I'll comment. Okay, I'll call Deanna.
Call tomorrow, yeah, call Deanna, we'll get you all.
Okay.
You don't have to pay the $6,000 to do it.
Okay.
We're not talking.
We're R1, so, okay, thank you.
Uh, board of trustee comments, starting with Mr. Curtis.
I have none.
Ms. Payne.
Nothing. Happy New Year.
Joe?
Do I have anything?
I have nothing. Curtis?
Yes, we have the cemetery maintenance contract out for good right now, so if you know anybody interested in owning cemeteries, you may can. As pristine as they were before, you know, let's do the kind of...
I want a do-over.
Oh, backsees.
Do-over.
You haven't done yours yet.
You're right.
You gotta go down to market.
No, just want to let you know the new generators on the tab there, it's all hooked up. We have a few more things to do, there's a couple testing, tests that we have to complete. Also, we have to get gas to it, and pretty soon, we're going to be up and running. Also, Debbie.
I'd like to congratulate RG Payne. She's just been appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals Secretary. Congratulations.
Also, I'd like to mention that the DDA is gonna start back with their N24 task force starting the 22nd. So even though it's gonna be an extra year out, they're gonna be looking at financing an additional year, you know, bringing in funds. That's it.
I'd like to thank Curtis for his part.
I'll make a motion adjourned.